Good evening and welcome to the May 23 meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have a good crowd tonight. Welcome all of you, students in particular. We're also glad to have those that are watching live TV at home and we're glad to have them with us as well. I'm going to ask you at this time to please stand as we have three young people from our school system lead us in our pledge. Daria Benford, a sixth grade student at Bradley, and her brother, Taryn Benford, a fifth grade student at Bradley. Also Rachel Peters, a kindergarten student at Black Fox. Following our pledge during our moment of silence, we'll ask that you please remember the family of Ms. Jane Cooper, who was an educational assistant at Reeves Rogers for many years who passed away on Sunday. She was a valued member of the Reeves Rogers family and she will be greatly missed from that facility. And now our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our moment of silence. All right, members of the board, you have seen a copy of the agenda. We have a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, communications. Ms. Trail?
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a few communications and then a lot of great celebrations. So first of all, Reeves Rogers would like to thank Redstone Financial for adopting Reeves Rogers for the second year, sponsoring items and resources needed for the students. Also, they'd like to thank St. Mark's Methodist Church for providing snacks for teachers all year long. Quick, a few things that aren't on your communications tonight, just because we're getting so many things in the end of school year when we want to make sure we give accolades where they are deserved. We had a group of students compete in the MTSU winner's circle in their art show. I'd like to tell you that 10 MCS schools received 23 of the top 28 awards in K through.
Wow.
Wow.
So last month, you got to see a little bit out there on, in the rotunda and you could see how great it was. So some of that art mixed with other pieces of art went to MTSU. We have to thank Ms. Dee Dee Potter and the art teachers for just showing our kids work and it is just so great to see those awards. And they were texting us that afternoon after the awards came out. They were so proud. And we're proud. 23 of 28 awards.
That's great.
Next, I want to make sure that I talk a little bit about Reeves Rogers Elementary. I know that y'all received the press release, but we do want to go on record to say in congratulations to Reeves Rogers for becoming our ninth designated STEM school. This makes Murfreesboro City School have 69% of our schools as designated STEM schools. Our goal is to be at 100 in the next four years and we're well on our way. We have the largest percentage of STEM schools or STEAM designated schools in any district in the state of Tennessee.
Wow.
So.
Thank you.
These are fun announcements. Okay, so the reason all these people are here with us, our students and our parents, we had our 13th Elementary Science Olympiad at John Pitter. So I thought, Mr. Bryson is somewhere in this crowd, so thank you for opening John Pitter to us. This was held on April 29. It was a huge success to an in-person competition. If you've never seen the Science Olympiad, I just want y'all to go ahead and put that on your radar for next year. It is so much fun to watch. Also want to take time to thank the coaches from the six schools who helped prepare 123 of our students for a full day of competition on that day. So great results, the best ones are standing behind me right now, but I want to take, give me just one more second. I did say thank you to Mr. Bryson. Also thank you to MTSU for making this possible and for our SROs and all the other staff that really pulled this together. It takes a huge teamwork to make this happen and we're so proud that we were able to host this at John Pitter. So in second place this year, Discovery School. We're going to skip third place. In fourth place, Overall Creek. And then in sixth place, Bradley Academy. But first place in the Science Olympiad competition this year was Northfield Elementary. Woo! So they have this huge trophy that they wanted to make sure that you saw, but I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dickerson and let him tell you more about it.
Yes, this is the way, you know. We are so proud of our students and our team. They did a phenomenal job this year and we are just thrilled to be here to celebrate the success of our students, which has been really built on the phenomenal support of so many of our parents that are in the crowd and our faculty. And with that being said, I would like one of our students to say a few words. Utzku, will you come up and talk about your experience?
Yes, I will.
You go.
My name is Utzku and I'd just like to thank all the people who participated in this year's Olympiad, all the parents who took the time to bring their child or children to participate, and especially the organizers and the sponsors and definitely the teachers like Mr. Dickerson, Ms. Carr, Ms. Whitaker, Ms. Butler, and more. Participating was a big deal and I'm really glad we won. The practice took time. There were some difficult moments. We overcame the challenge. We persevered a lot. Personally, I want to be an architect when I grow up. The mystery architecture category was really helpful and made me get more interested. Overall, I think we did a great job and this meant a lot to my school, Northfield Elementary. Thank you.
Great things are happening at Northfield.
Yes. That's right.
Things are happening at Northfield. I'm so proud of you. I'm going to say, let's give them one more hand as they take. And then I'm going to give the mic over to Dr. Duke and I'm going to go take photos of these kids out in the foyer. So.
Good night, y'all.
Congratulations. Love the shirts.
Come back to see us again.
Give another speech. That was good.
Yeah.
That was better than me.
And our families of Science Olympiads, if you want to go outside, you're welcome to go with them. You're welcome to stay for the meeting, but I promise you that was the fun part.
No more fun here.
Let go to show why they're here. They ain't here for us.
Well, we're not here for your lord.
That's true too. You're right.
Ready, sir?
Yes, sir. I'm waiting on you.
Before we get to our recognition stat, our first recognition, I am thrilled to introduce formally to the board someone that the board knows well, which is Ms. Jenny Ortiz, who will be serving as the next principal of Overall Creek Elementary School.
All right.
As the board knows, Mr. Barch will be leaving Overall to join us at Central Office as our new assistant superintendent. We went through a really rigorous review process, interview process, pulled together a panel of parents, of teachers, of other administrators to narrow down and find the top choice. And I will say, Ms. Ortiz was the overwhelming choice of the panel. We are excited to support her as she moves into this role, but she will bring continuity to Overall. She will continue the great things that Overall is doing. She has the respect of our administrators. She has the respect of the teachers there. And I will tell you, I mean, the parent we had on the committee, listen, she asked some tough questions. So Ms. Ortiz, of course, did a great job. So I wanted to formally introduce her and give her a moment to speak.
Thank you, Dr. Duke, and thank you, board. I'm honored and I'm excited about this new challenge. We have an amazing staff, an amazing group of parents and students at the Creek, and I look forward to all of us working together to continue being leaders in STEAM and in our students just being successful. And it's going to be a great year. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to mention Dr. Lewis, who is taking over Bradley with Mr. Rocha coming up to Central Office as well. He had some school commitments tonight and could not be here, so we're going to get him this summer, but he's finishing up his current placement. They had a graduation tonight he needed to be at, so he'll be at a future meeting.
Thank you, sir, very much. Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. We know that you'll do a superb job and you'll keep that school in the forefront.
That's right.
The best of MCS, Dr. Duke.
Yes, sir. We are excited tonight to present our May Best of MCS recognition to not one, but two amazing MCS educators. And I would like to ask Ms. Francina Jackson and Mr. Mark Harris to join me at the podium. That's great. Both Ms. Jackson and Mr. Harris are sixth grade teachers at John Pitterd, and we are so thankful for all of our sixth grade teachers here in MCS and all they do to make our schools great. Ms. Jackson has been in education for 19 years and we are blessed to say she has spent all 19 of those years with us here in MCS.
Wow.
She formally taught at Reeves Rogers and moved to John Pitterd when the school opened. She's been there making a difference ever since. Mr. Harris has been in education for 17 years, with the last six of those being in MCS. He has taught at both Hobgood and John Pitterd. Interestingly, this is not his first career. He came to education after leaving the construction field in his 40s, at 40. Both Ms. Jackson and Mr. Harris were nominated for this recognition by their principal, Mr. Bryson. He wanted to honor them for going above and beyond for their students. Each year, Ms. Jackson and Mr. Harris take our sixth graders to Land Between the Lakes for a sixth grade trip. This is an expensive endeavor and they go above and beyond for their students to raise funds for this experience. They lead concession sales at every basketball game. They host three dances a year. They do all this so the profits can go to Land Between the Lakes. Mr. Bryson did add on top of all this work, well, they're just amazing sixth grade teachers. I also talked to a colleague of both of theirs and I asked them to talk to me about both Ms. Jackson and Mr. Harris. And she said, Francina and Mark are so much more than coworkers or professional colleagues. They are family. They are the ones who are with you through thick and thin. They know the good, the bad, and the ugly, see you at your best, your worst, and choose to love and encourage you all the way. They have your back. They lift you up. They hold you accountable and they encourage you to go for your dreams. With students, they genuinely lead with their hearts and put relationships first always. They invest in their students' lives and go above and beyond to help them become well-rounded humans. Each year, they sacrifice, they cheer on, and they give their all to their sixth grade students. Ms. Jackson and Mr. Harris, on behalf of the district, I do want to say thank you for going the extra mile for your students. We are so proud to have you in MCS. We know we are a better district because you work here with us. So thank you both for representing the best of MCS.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
We owe you the thanks.
That's right.
Yeah, I wanted to say something before they left, please, because the Land Between the Lakes trip, it was like a goal in my household for my kids when they were at John Pitterd. And I'm glad to see the faces behind it because hats off to you for taking my kids. Because it's an undertaking and I know and I'm aware of that. So hats off. I mean, just great work. That alone merits recognition. That's above and beyond anything that's required. And when I see educators like this, it reminds me that anybody that goes into education, it should be a calling, a vocation, and not just a way to get out of the house. So thank you for that and especially to you for leaving the construction business, I think they said.
With a little haircut.
Yeah, just slightly, right? To help our kids. And thank you so much. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I got a question about Land Between the Lakes, and I'm going back 40 years, I guess.
Y'all just stay up here.
Yeah.
Come on back.
Do you go for the full week?
Oh, no, sir.
It's three.
She said that quickly. Oh, no.
I think that was a.
It's like two days, right?
I think that was a real no.
Morning and get back Friday afternoon.
Yeah.
And they run until 6 o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
10, 11 o'clock at night.
Yeah.
So everybody comes back.
Wiped out.
Yeah.
I was going to volunteer to go one year.
Why don't you do that?
I will go next year.
Why don't you go now?
When is it? When does the?
Our dates for next year, we're trying to go again in May because the spring was just amazing. Like, we had an amazing time at the pond study. They caught salamanders, tackles. We were rained on.
I'd always gone in the fall.
It's amazing.
And it was a completely different dynamic with so many more organisms apparent and everything.
Yeah.
I went in the summer with Red Cross years and years and year, many years ago, and we got to get out in the lake and turn our canoe over and all that stuff. And that was just so, I loved that.
We're shooting for that, but the weather's never agreed with us.
Right. When I go, we will turn over a canoe.
There you go.
He's your chaperone.
Well, I'm sorry I asked the question because you got seven followed during to go with you. I was just curious because used to, and I, like I said, this is years ago, we went for the full week. You left on Monday morning, you came back Friday afternoon.
Yep.
And I went several times with different, different groups. Even when I was teaching in the county, they would ask me to go and I loved to go.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
It's a good time.
Great experience.
Okay.
Both of us together? I don't know.
Oh, no.
Yeah, that's okay.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Duke, spotlight on education.
Yes, one more recognition tonight. It's been a fun night. Tonight, as we wrap up this school year, we wanted to put a spotlight on education specifically on as we're working and planning for next year to make it a great success. And to do this, we know we have to have amazing educators in our classrooms every day. And one way we help make sure we have a strong pipeline is through our partnerships with MTSU to host future teachers completing their residency requirement. A great residency or student teaching placement can make all the difference for a future educator. And we are so thankful that so many of our MCS teachers are willing to host them as their mentor teachers. MTSU also understands the value of a strong mentor teacher, and each year they recognize mentor teachers of excellence in five different categories. And tonight we have Dr. Shannon Harmon with us from MTSU, who is part of that work in the Education Department. So thank you for joining us here tonight. And tonight I am thrilled to recognize two MCS educators who were selected this year as mentor teachers of excellence. So first, I'd like to call to me Ms. Donna Carr. And Ms. Carr teaches fourth grade at Northfield, and she was selected as the recipient of the Elementary Education Mentor Teacher of the Year. So congratulations.
Wow.
We had another Mentor Teacher of the Year that MTSU selected, and that is from Overall Creek, Ms. Amanda Turnbull, who was selected as the Special Education Mentor Teacher of the Year. So I'd like to just congratulate them. And again, we have to have them. We know, we, the best thing we can do, and we say it all the time, is to make sure we have a great educator in front of students. And that starts by making sure they have great residency placements. And both Ms. Carr and Ms. Turnbull represent two of those, two of those teachers who are giving back and making sure we have a strong pipeline. So again, congratulations to both of you. Any one?
I just want to say thank you so much. And I think we've worked for a wonderful school system, our district and our administration at Northfield. It's wonderful.
Ditto what she said. And I really enjoy working with MTSU. This is my second year to have a student teacher, and they are so very helpful. And you guys are always so good about training them to be able to be their best and just so professional. And that's on you guys. So thank you.
Thank you. This only happens because of you guys. The work we do is supported by our partnership with your school system. So thank you so very much. Congratulations.
I am, yes, thank you very much. And I'm very pleased to say that Ms. Carr's student teacher has accepted a job in MCS.
All right. Dr. Duke, I've heard Northfield a lot tonight.
Yeah.
I was going to ask, does their administrator happen to be here?
Their administrator is here, you know, Ms. Campbell and Ms. Middleton, both of the administrators who are doing an absolutely.
Maybe they could stand up and take a bow. And I know that, and administrators are really good at saying, you know, it's my team, it's my team. But the team is motivated by the leadership of the administrators. And I want to say hats off to Northfield for some exemplary work. I'm just, I'm blown away. Thank you, Northfield.
We're so proud of what they're doing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Congrats to everybody. That's what makes this school system so great.
Absolutely, yes.
The people, the people do.
Yeah.
All right, board members, we have a motion to approve the consent items as printed.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, action items. Approval of the sub-recipient agreement with the city.
Yes, sir. The city of Murfreesboro was part of a settlement agreement through the National Prescription Opioid Litigation. And through that settlement, for this fiscal, or I'm sorry, for the next fiscal year, FY24, the city is receiving an amount of $140,935. The city reached out to us to see if we would like to partner with them to use those funds in our school system. So this sub-recipient agreement acknowledges that the city of Murfreesboro seeks to enter into a strategic partnership with the city schools to use these funds to prevent the misuse of opioids through the implementation of school-based programs and strategies that demonstrate effectiveness in preventing drug misuse. Under this agreement, MCS will address mental health needs of students and increase awareness to mental health services and supports for family. Through the use of the settlement funds, MCS will provide two mental health counselors, curriculum materials to implement an evidence-based mental health program, and access for supportive services. I do want to point out with those two mental health counselors that those are positions that are currently funded through ESAR funds for this final year by us moving it to this grant, which is very specific. This is the way we can use it. It frees up some of those ESAR III money for other purchases that may be needed. This sub-recipient agreement is for the performance period of July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024. I will say, we are expecting that we will update this annually. The total term, to my understanding, of the settlement is 18 years. This first lump sum represents some original fees as well as the first three years. So we would expect next year that we would bring another sub-recipient agreement to the board for significantly less and then if all goes as planned for the next 15 years following.
Wow.
And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Sir, we have a motion to approve the sub-recipient agreement with the city.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Approval of the resolution, the sub is, okay.
Yes, so we are now seeking approval for the attached resolution, which recognizes that the distribution of the $140,935 in opioid settlement funds from the city of Murfreesboro to Murfreesboro City Schools constitutes a one-time appropriation from the city general fund to the MCS general purpose fund for fiscal year '24. Furthermore, the resolution states that this transfer will not increase or otherwise affect the city's maintenance effort obligation under state law and that MCS will utilize the funds as outlined in the sub-recipient agreement.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. My brain is not working tonight.
Ballard.
Ballard. I'll get it. Oh, we got a motion to say, any question or comment? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I see none there either. Okay. Budget amendment.
Yes, sir. This budget amendment, and this is actually a little unusual, so I want to talk through this a little bit. This is the budget amendment to actually show the $140,000 on our books in our budget, but it's actually for next year's budget because it doesn't go into effect to July. The reason we're doing the budget amendment now is so that when we go to city council on Thursday, they can approve it in their budget as well as in our budget presentation. So instead of, because you have already approved our FY24 budget, we want to get this corrected. So when the city does their first approval of our budget and when they write their budget and approve their budget, this money is already shown in there. So that is what this is for. The revenues, it increases both our revenues and expenditures for FY24 by the $140,935 and there's no change to fund balance. As a reminder, our original FY24 budget was approved by the board on April 25.
Okay, thank you, sir. We have a motion to approve the budget amendment.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I see none. Thank you. Approval of the general purpose school budget amendment.
Yes, the finance director requests the board to approve to transfer previously approved funds within the same major budget category as our final end-of-the-year cleanup amendment for the general purpose budget. This amendment transfers a total of $733,415 to recognize changes in preliminary salary and benefit budget estimates to our actual year-end expenditures. Increases also include three vacation payouts for retiring employees and resigning employees, sub-cost utilities, additional maintenance projects, overtime for hourly transportation employees who've been covering bus routes, and to increase in bus parts. All increases are covered with savings and other line items within the same major budget category. There are no new revenues or expenditures, no new positions, and no change to fund balance.
I have a motion to approve the general purpose school budget amendment.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I see none. Approval of the ESP fund budget amendment.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I see none. Approval of the ESP fund budget amendment.
The finance director is requesting the board approve the transfer of funds totaling $8,300 in the current year ESP fund as a final budget cleanup for this as well. This amendment transfers these funds to employee retirement and insurance accounts from savings and unemployment compensation and transfers money into electricity, from electricity to water and sewer.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the ESP fund budget amendment.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I see none. Thank you. Approval of the 2023-24 board meeting schedule.
Yes, the staff is presenting the proposed 23-24. Yes, the staff is presenting the proposed 23-24 board meeting schedule for board review and approval. Currently, our regular meetings are scheduled for the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month, with both meetings being held in city council chambers. However, the attached proposed schedules recommend that the first regular board meeting of the month be held at the MCS administrative offices for more of a work session type of meeting, with the second meeting being held in city council chambers, with the exception of August and January. If there is only one meeting scheduled for the month, that meeting would be held at city hall. The schedule also includes three predetermined work sessions, August 22nd, April 9th, and April 16th, all occurring after, from 4:00 to 8:00 in the afternoons, and these are typical to what we typically do. And then also includes a day-long board retreat on Saturday, January 27th. This schedule does not include any special call board meetings or other work sessions that may be deemed necessary for the operation of the school system.
We have a motion to approve the meeting schedule.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Approval of revenue and expenditure report.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Before you, there is a three-page summary of transactions. They're year-to-date transactions through April 30th. We have a collection so far of, just a second, 83.8 million, and we've expended 72 million. And we will, we're in the process now of wrapping up our budget in addition to closing out the year end. And thank you for approving those budget amendments. That was very helpful. Our revenues and expenditures to date are in line with budget. And I'm pleased to say that one of the budget amendments that you approved was to put some more money in our maintenance projects. And so you will start seeing some of the expenditures come through with some increased maintenance. And one of them is, we just signed a contract to paint, to do some painting with Reese Rogers. So that was money well spent. So thank you for that budget amendment. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. We have to have a motion to approve the revenue and expenditure report. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any question or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I see none. All right. Reports and information, enrollment. Mr. Marlin?
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to draw your attention to the reports you have in front of you. And this will be for the eighth period of the year. So that's the eighth of the 20-day periods that ends, that ended on May the 9th. Our enrollment at that time was 9,351, which is still slightly lower than we were hoping. But that's a total of about 69 students less than we had at the end of last year. So that's still, that 60-student difference maintains. That's a difference of 23 students from the last reporting period. Those numbers stay fairly stable across there. I'll draw your attention to the PTR report for that, for this period. If you notice at the bottom of that page, our PTR for the district total is one teacher for 19.09 students, which was within the parameters that we look for every, every time period. And all the other information there's there for your perusal. In the next report, the truancy report, our numbers did go up during this time period. We're sitting at 595 students that are truant. That's just slightly above where we were this time last year. Last year, we had 571 students at this, at this time period. We know that we've seen a slight increase all year long. That has stayed, stayed true throughout this time period. And the last report is your chronic absenteeism report. And for the eighth period, we're sitting at 1,214 students who have missed 16 or more days. And that includes, you'll remember with chronic absenteeism, we're talking about excused and unexcused absences. This time last year, we had 1,317 students in that category. So it's a slight decrease from last year. And we expect to see that number decline again. It has steadily declined, well, up and down, but declined overall throughout the course of the year. I'll be glad to answer any questions about any of that information.
Mr. Ballard?
Mr. Marlin, when we look at the numbers on the first sheet.
Yes, sir.
Period eight, and we see that BEP-funded 8927, and BEP unfunded or non-funded is 424. How is it that, I mean, are we able to recover that in any way? And Kim, that may be a question, because we're paid by the, by the head count.
We are. And, but this is, those are preschool students, and they do not fit into that category. But we, you know, we manage this district to be able to do that, because we understand the importance of it. We do receive a small amount of money. We receive a grant that helps with some, with the preschool, but it's, but they're not part of the BEP funding mechanism.
I know that's all changing, but I don't know exactly how that works as far as population change. So like, if we have 9351 that we actually have as our head count now, are we getting money through TESA or through BEP for that count?
So the preschool funding comes from the state preschool grant that we apply for. So the preschool students do not count in BEP funding, and they will not count for TESA funding. But we do receive that separate grant for them as well. And Ms. Fairchild, I don't know if you want to talk at all about preschool peers and how funding is generated for those students as well?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Or our typical peers, they are screened and chosen, and then they are charged $300 a month. And that's collected at the school.
So there are several revenue sources coming in for those pre-K students, even though they're not part of the official BEP or the TESA funding mechanism that we generate state funds for. And our BE, and I'm going to go back to Ms. Fairchild and maybe Ms. Arnett here, the preschool grant we have funds us per classroom.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I did. I had one more question, and it's really to Joe specifically. Is this it?
No, we have, after next, after our next board meeting, I will no longer be in attendance.
How long you been sitting on that one?
Thank you for recognizing the pun.
I, I wanted to say, I did get a chance to say to Ralph, I apologize that I wasn't able to make it to the big shindig send-off that they had for you all. But certainly, I do want to express my gratitude for having worked with you for these last, I guess, going on, ooh, eight years or whatever. I don't know. But thank you. I've always appreciated your responses and your forthrightness and all the stuff. I really appreciated the times when we would ask you a question, and you'd say something like, I don't know, but I'm going to get back with you on that. So thank you for that. And I hope you have a wonderful retirement, and that you enjoy it to the fullest, because you deserve the best.
Well, thank you. The 10 years here have been great. I've, I've enjoyed every part of it. I've done lots of different things. My, my name badges on my desk show that, you know, the number of different titles that I've had while at the district. But it's all been good, and I've enjoyed it. I will say that the day that I walked into Ralph's office when Ralph was acting director, and he said, Joe, I, I need you to take over attendance. And I thought, yeah, I know how to count students. I know how to, when I was a teacher, I remember taking attendance at the classroom. But this has been quite different, and, but it's been, it's been a great experience, all the different things that I've been able to do in these 10 years. So thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
We need a motion to approve that report. We do not. All right. Personnel report.
Your personnel report is in your packet, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have about that.
All right, sir. Any questions on the personnel report? All right, directors update, Dr. Duke?
So a couple of things on the update tonight, and just so the board knows, a couple of announcements I'm going to make. And then I'm going to ask Dr. Chris George, who is our data and assessment coordinator, come and give the board an update on third grade specifically. But before we get into that, there were a couple of announcements I want to make. Obviously, reminding everyone that Friday is our last day of school. It's a half-day for students. So we are excited as we are wrapping up this week and all the fun festivities. We will have the week of Memorial Day with no students, and then come June 5th, we start with summer school. So four days, and then we are ready to kick it back in high gear with summer school. Also, wanted to make sure the board was aware that I will be presenting our budget to city council Thursday at a 4:00 work session. And look forward to presenting that. And then they will vote later on in June, but this is the public hearing where I will present to the council. And finally, with more good news that we've been celebrating tonight, you may remember that we have a show that John Pageant here at City TV with Lisa Trail and Tori Cardou called Take 20. And Ms. Johnson and I are thrilled enough to host that, and it's probably one of the funnest things we do. But it's a great show. Last year, if you remember, they won the bronze award for what's called the TELI Awards. And for our new board members, the TELI Awards is a national award program that showcases the best work created within television across video for all screens. There are over 12,000 entries a year from all 50 states and five continents. TELI Award winners represent work from some of the most respected advertising agencies, television stations, and publishers from around the world. And of those over 12,000 entries, I am thrilled to say that we found out today that this year, Take 20 moved from bronze to silver award winner.
There we go.
Into children's programming category. So congratulations. And I have to say, we won silver. And just so you're aware, the gold level winner was Jim Henson Productions. So we like to point that out. I did ask, when I got that award today, Maria and I both asked if it was for best host. It was not. That's okay. Best overall, or best children's programming. And it is truly remarkable. If you haven't watched our Take 20 episodes, Lisa, Tori, John do a phenomenal job putting that together, spotlighting our district. And so to see it once again, not only recognized nationally, but to move up from a bronze to a silver shows just the talent we have. So thank you, Lisa. Thank you, John, in the back.
Yes.
So those are my initial announcements. But I would like to ask, as the board is well aware, we are operating under the new law regarding promotion to fourth grade and third grade regarding the requirements the state has in place for students to be promoted. We received our initial test data back last Friday that indicated which students fell in our proficient category as well as our below and approaching category. As a reminder, the law requires that to be promoted to fourth grade, you must be proficient, or you must meet certain criteria. That criteria could include everything from summer school to fourth-grade tutoring to both. There is an appeal process and a retake opportunity. So with all that in mind, we are in the throes of that. I'm going to ask Dr. George to come up, who's done an absolutely incredible job managing this this year, and give us an update and give the board an update on where we are.
Good evening, board. How are you all?
Good evening, Dr. George.
So I'm going to do this in two phases. So if you have questions in the middle, you can ask. So we received our preliminary ELA third-grade scores on Friday afternoon. And so of that preliminary data that we had, we had 43.53% of our third-grade students who met or exceeded expectations on their third-grade TCAP. Also, in addition to that, we had 15.5% of our students who did not meet expectations that are going to be exempt from the retention law. So that means that they've qualified for one of the four criteria for exemption. And I went ahead and I added in, because we've been seeing other school districts have publicized, you know, this 70%, 71%. We right now have 19.25, so right at 19% of our students who did not meet or exceed expectations, but do qualify for the appeal process through their Ames Web universal screener score being at or above the 40th percentile. So I'll pause there and see if there are any questions about the preliminary data, and then I'll speak to the retake process that we started today.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So the appeal, if they have that data from Ames Web, if they're, you said above the 40th percentile, if they go through with the appeal process, is that an automatic thing because they have that evidence?
So on the appeal process, students have to be in the approaching category and have an Ames Web screener percentile of the 40th percentile or higher. So what we've been told by the Department of Education is that that's that baseline for appeal, be in the approaching category, and be above the 40th percentile, and they should be granted appeal.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So when they appeal, when, when will we hear back from that? Like, whether it was approved or not? Does anybody know?
I know that the communication that we've got is, once the appeal process opens on the 30th of May, we will get a spreadsheet sent to us by the state. States, the state will communicate with parents directly through email, and then we will get a summary of each week, the appeals and what's happened with those appeals. But, and that's one of the things that we've cautioned with our schools, is that the appeals are not approved or denied by Murfreesboro City Schools, anybody in our central office. They are approved or denied based on the requirements that TDOE set forth.
Okay.
Is there a deadline for the appeal?
June 30th. So parents have from May 30th to June 30th to file that appeal. And one of the things that we have also spoken to principals about, even if students do meet those qualifications for appeal, we are not discouraging attendance or enrollment in summer school, just because that we know that we can help move these students to proficiency when they go into fourth grade. And that's still the target. Even though they're still below that grade level, they still qualify to move on to fourth grade without any of those requirements. But we do acknowledge and support that summer school will help those students as they transition into fourth grade.
I do want to point out, while we're on the subject of appeal, to emphasize two things. They do have through June 30th, the parents have to file the appeal. We cannot file that on behalf of them. So as a district, next week, every school will be hosting basically a window with computers set up, and we're really encouraging their contacting every family by phone that's eligible to come into the school next Tuesday and Wednesday. We'll have the state ID number they need. We'll have their Ames Ready Score they need to appeal. We'll have everything for them. So the parent can come in, we'll provide that information, get that appeal assigned and submitted, I'm sorry. Then on Thursday, we will hold that same thing at central office if they can't come the first two days, and we'll go until 6:30 at night for working families. So even though they have to the 30th, we really want to encourage our families to come into those three days next week. Let us help you fill that appeal form out, make sure you have the right data so that there's no hiccups on that side. Of course, if they can't, we can send them the information. They can do it from their smartphone at home, but we want to make it as easy as possible for our families to get that done.
What are some of the categories that a parent might use to appeal?
So there are two basic appeal qualifications. Is the student approaching, and do they have an Ames Web screener score of 40th percentile or higher? That's option one. And then option two is to appeal based on catastrophic life events that might have happened for the student or the family during the time of testing.
You mentioned some exceptions that were going to get pulled out. Did you say four?
There are four exceptions, yes, sir.
Okay, do you want to mention those?
I can. So if a student has been previously retained, so even if they were in kindergarten, if they did kindergarten a second year, that would count. So any student that's been previously retained, any student who has a disability that impacts their reading, any student that has a suspected disability, so any student that's in the process now of going through a referral process for special education services for a reading disability. And then the last one is that for any English language learner who has less than two years of English education in the United States. So those are the four appeal categories. I'm sorry, those are the four exemption categories that, that will move students on.
Thank you.
Let me understand the, the exception on the English language learner, second language learner. If the, if the child, that child is, doesn't meet the criteria to be advanced to the fourth grade, are they still going to go to the fourth grade because of their exception?
Yes, sir. As long as they have less than two years of English, English instruction, they will be moved to fourth grade. And Dr. Duke, I know you've, is there anything?
The only thing I will add is the kind of baseline is that two years. So it's an automatic, if you've been here less than two years. However, every school and parent, as they work together, if there's a family or a child that's been here for three years, and both the school and the family say, we feel like the reason... and both the school and the family say, we feel like the reason they scored, the core issue here is English language development, then they, the guidance we have is, you know, from a, they have the right to be moved on. They cannot be held back if the school is saying the reason for this is because of their English language. So the original guidance we got from the state said, had to be two years. They have now kind of backed that up and said, it's really a school-based decision if, if it's, if there's students who may be on that bubble of slightly over two years.
I have a question. And this probably isn't something, you know, I guess I'm just thinking, if it's automatic, if you score approaching and you have Ames Web in the 40th percentile or above, why do parents have to go through an appeal?
That's a good question.
Like, why isn't that, I mean, if it's automatic, then that should be a qualification to be promoted. So that's not, I'm just making a point because that seems like a silly hoop to make parents jump through.
Right. And what I can say is that we are in the process of retesting, which will be some of the data that we're going through here in a second. But what we would like to see is that students, even though it will not affect our district accountability and our overall success rate, what we would like to see is those students who are approaching and over the 40th percentile, maybe they move to the meeting expectations on the retake that we're giving. And then they are, they don't have to worry about an appeal or anything. They just go to fourth grade and they are good to go.
So what is the timeline for the retesting?
Okay, so I will move into that. So we, so we got the scores on Friday. We got everything to the schools. They had a Monday, they began contacting parents. So we had schools that started the retake today. Our window runs through Thursday. So today, we had 419 students who completed the third grade ELA retake. And so of those 419, I'm proud to say, we had about 10% of our students who moved into the meets or exceeding expectations category.
Oh, you got the score?
Oh, we got it, yeah. We, we were expecting, we had been told that the scores would be a 48-hour turnaround, but we were able to see those scores as soon as they finish. So today, we had right at 40 students that moved into the meeting and exceeding category. We also had another 35 students that went from below the lowest category into the approaching category. Why that is important is because if a student was in the below expectations, they had no appeal process.
Right.
They hadn't, they had to do summer school and the after-school or during-school tutoring. So those 35 students, by virtue of moving to that next level, have made themselves eligible for an appeal if they're above the 40th percentile. But it has also increased the likelihood that they can just do summer school and that'd be the only requirement that they need for promotion to fourth grade. And then what I can say is that currently where we're sitting, so I told you that we were at 43.53% of our students meeting expectations. Right now, as of today, and we have nine schools that have tested out of the 13. So I have four more schools that will test tomorrow for the retake. We have moved up to 46.4% of our students meeting or exceeding expectations. We still have 15.5% of our students that qualify for that exemption. And based on the new data of the students that have moved from below to approaching, we now have that 19.25 or right at 19% of students that can appeal. So those are students that we've looked at, have met the eligibility for approaching, and also have moved to the 40th percentile or higher, which takes us approximately at about 81% of our students right now, before we finish our testing tomorrow and Thursday, that are eligible for movement into, into fourth grade. And I'll also say that Lisa Trail told me we did the percentage. That means that we have 260 third grade students right now that we know are going to have to 100% do summer school. Yes, sir.
This will be way off, but you have a student that possibly tested in the county that in interim moved to the city, and they haven't received their scores.
We have, we have a great relationship with the Assessment Office in Rutherford County. So we have a couple of students that we've had that happen. So all I've had to do is email Mr. Whittington in Rutherford County, and we've been given that score so we can notify parents.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, were you finished?
Done.
This, this 10% change on the retest, is that indicative of maybe a poor metric or the reliability of a single test on one day or some other unknown?
I think that's a great question. I think that we have, we can't discount the, the, there's no writing on it. So it's strictly multiple choice. So I just, I think, you know, I can't say specifically what it would be. I do know that not having the writing and that big lift of that 85-minute test and breaking it into four subparts might be a big thing. But I, I don't know that I could specifically say until we get to see all the data.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Dodd?
I probably should know this, but is the summer school, is it one month or two months?
It's 20 days.
20 days.
20 days, starting June 5th through June 30th.
Okay, and that's, they don't have a July option, it's just June, right?
That's correct.
I have a question.
Okay.
About summer school, just that I saw someone ask this publicly today. So just to clarify, there's not a retest at the end of summer school. It's if you qualify for summer school, so if you're in approaching, you attend with 90% attendance, you're automatically promoted, there's no kind of?
So TDOE did release that we have to have a post-test. So students will have to show adequate growth from where their retake was up to that point. And Sherri, I don't know if you want to?
The State Board has defined adequate growth as five, as about a 5% increase. So, and that is, through all this conversation, been one of the things that I think may not have gotten the attention is, so if, if they're an approaching student, and I want to be very clear, approaching, so maybe they were at the 25th percentile on Ames, they could not appeal. They go to summer school. They have to maintain 90% attendance, which is 18 of the 20 days. At the end of summer school, there's a post-test, just like there's been the last two years. If they do not show adequate growth on that post-test, it is the same as not attending the 18 days. So they would then, the approaching student would then have to go through tutoring during fourth grade. So there is still a promotion pathway.
That's right.
They just have to go through tutoring in fourth grade. I, I will say, our message continues to be to families, we strongly, strongly, strongly encourage families, if at all possible, to choose that summer school option as kind of a guarantee, let's get into fourth grade and not have this hanging over us in fourth grade as well. Our intention and what we've been very transparent with families about is our intention in fourth grade is to do the tutoring during the school day as part of their regular intervention time. But what we know is we have to do it for our below students. That's a requirement, summer school, and for these approaching. You know, our intention is very much to do it during the school day. If we find ourselves in a place where maybe our staffing doesn't allow it, we may be calling families and saying, we need people to do it before school, after school. And the law also stipulates if an approaching student is promoted to fourth grade based on the tutoring option, doesn't do the tutoring, they have to be retained in fourth grade. So again, there are several other pieces coming, which is why we want to emphasize to parents, let's get them in summer school. It's a great program. Promise you they're going to have a lot of fun. They're going to learn a lot. And then let's kind of hopefully have that post-test done, and we can get them moved on to fourth grade with nothing else kind of hanging out there for those students.
Where?
Question a little bit off the track here a bit, but how about the charter schools and private schools? Are their students having to do, take this test and report?
Public charter schools would have to do it. Private schools are exempt. So it doesn't apply to private schools because they don't take the TCAP assessment. Public charter schools would, it would apply to them.
Okay, good, thank you.
So the private schools would be like St. Rose, Providence, Tennessee Christian?
That's correct.
All right, sir, carry on, I'm sorry.
Well, I just wanted to applaud Dr. Duke and Dr. George for taking this mass and the communication that we've put in place for parents and the support that is involved with students. And then, you know, just going through all the data and, you know, it's just such a big undertaking. I just appreciate your all's efforts and your team.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the Zoom meeting was great, I thought. I don't know what the final count on attendance is who that was. I think when I was there, it was like 80 people were on, on board.
You know, the final count over both Zooms, 160?
About 160, plus we've had a lot of people watch it.
Watch it, yeah.
We did record that and of course include that link with every letter that went home to families so that if they weren't able to join the Zoom. And that was, I think Lisa, I counted, that was our seventh Zoom we had done this year throughout the year to help prepare for this. And we understand, you know, I think we, and we knew this would happen. We, we have had a lot of communication, we're proud of that communication. But there's always a big difference in the question mark and then now the reality. And so our focus has really shifted. Again, as I keep saying, our goal has been and will continue to be working with our principals to make sure every family understands we can find you a pathway to promotion. You may have to do some things, right? And we're going to walk you through that, and we're going to work you through that. But our goal continues to be a pathway of promotion for every student. I'm extremely encouraged on a couple fronts. One, with our third grade data, our initial data being over 43%. That's a, over a three, right at a 3% increase from where we were last year, which means we're going up, which is great as we get closer to our goal. So we're pleased with that. And that today, with still four schools left to test, we're sitting at 81% of our students have a very clear, all they need to do is come in and fill out the appeal, or they're already exempt, or they're promoted. So now we're talking about 20% of our students. Again, we're continuing to get that funnel smaller and smaller to really hone our messaging to families.
Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
There was a, I don't know, I don't remember what school system. And you may have seen it on the news today, and I think it's very apropos for this. And what she was saying was, she was reading something. I don't know that she wrote it, but somebody wrote it. And what she was, she was a third grade student. And she didn't make it. And what her comments were, I have been in third grade all year, I have made nothing but straight A's. And now, all of a sudden, you're telling me because of one test? And she was really coming out, I think, in her own way against the legislature. And I think that's what we as a board understand, and I hope that parents will. It's not the school system, it's not the Board of Education, it's not the teacher. We didn't make the rules.
Right.
We are having to abide by the rules. And if there's changes that need to be made, then the legislators are the one that need to be contacted.
And I'd like to add, Mr. Chairman, and I want to continue to say this, and Ms. Arnett and her team have preached this, and we've said it to our principals, and they're preaching it. And, and Dr. George has his communication. And so has Ms. Trail, as she's communicated to our families. We in no way want to discourage any family from participating in what I think is an absolutely amazing summer school program.
Yeah.
We want our students in summer school. We've been doing tutoring this year during the school day. We've had great success. We've started looking at some initial data from that. We're really excited about that data. There wasn't a requirement to do tutoring this year. We're doing that because that's what's good for kids. There hasn't, last year, there wasn't a requirement for families, the last two years, for their families to send their students to summer school. Families did that, and we welcomed it, and we wanted it. I think our first year, we had over 1,200, our first year, over 800 last year. We want our students to get these extra supports. We're going to provide them, and, and we're going to make sure they get it. So even if your child is proficient and you think a little extra help would benefit them, please, put them in summer school. If your child qualifies for the appeal, fill out that appeal just so you don't have the weight of it, but still send them to summer school. Like, we want them to get those services they need. So I don't want anyone to misconstrue in the public. When we're talking about appealing and we're talking about exemptions, it is not to withhold services. We are giving that gladly, and we want to give it because we have excellent teachers and excellent administrators running great programs that are helping kids, and we're going to keep doing that. But we do want to be very aware, and I think what this board has said about the, the unintended consequence of telling a child they have not met the standard on that one test on one day.
So where are we sitting at some, for summer school as far as enrollment is concerned?
Good evening.
Good evening.
As of 2:30 this afternoon, we have 1,087 students enrolled for summer school. 513 of those students are third graders. And we still have several emails and phone calls to return just based on retakes. But we're looking good, looking good.
Do we have a cap on the number, or can we just?
We don't have a cap. I mean, we do and we don't. I will tell you, we, we have placed all teachers. But we'll, you know, I can always do one more push if we need to. So just like Dr. Duke said, you know, join us for summer school for sure.
So we're fully staffed?
Yes, ma'am, for right now, we are.
And still have teachers that are encouraged, that would like to teach summer school if there's a spot?
We have a couple, just very small, very small. The instruction team may be teaching.
With 1,000 students, that's several teachers?
I think we're at 111 teachers, I believe, right now. And that's just Gen Ed, that doesn't include, I don't think our sped, sped numbers, but.
Okay, thank you.
We're good.
How does that compare to last summer?
So last summer, we had about 800, ended up with about 600. So it's, you know, we're almost double. Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
I think it's really important to know, and I know while Sherri is up here, just to congratulate her on what she does. But, you know, we think about traditional school and how it's changed in the last two years post-COVID. You know, this time of year, typically, as we think about with district work, it was about really kind of slowing down, taking a beat, taking a breath, planning for next year. And for the last two years, and to our teachers for the incredible hard work they're doing, it's about taking four days and then jumping back into a full school calendar with SROs and school nurses and crossing guards and school lunch and breakfast and instruction and counseling services. And so gone are the days of having really a month to kind of really think about planning. We go straight into summer school while also trying to plan for next year. Sherri and her team do an absolutely incredible job with that. But I just appreciate that work and wanted to say that.
Mr. Chairman, may I say something? I think you maybe broached this, and I want to bring it back up. I want to say to our parents and the members of Murfreesboro Citizens' Re- in general, no, we did not push this. This was not something of our making. And I do want you to know that some of your legislators, legislators that are on the Education Committee never had a child in public schools. I'm just going to put it out there. They never had a child in public schools. Some of them have not been educators. Some of them, in fact, homeschool their children. So some of the decisions that were made or that have been made and that have resulted in this third grade retention law have been made by legislators who don't have a keen understanding of what it's like to have a child in public schools. I'm putting it out there because ultimately, we decide. We decide who decides for us, just as y'all decided to put us in position. We also decide what legislators to send to the General Assembly. And it is incumbent upon us to determine what values we want to see represented at the Capitol. So I'm just putting it out there, just want you guys to know. You know, when you're upset and angry about these things, and I saw a parent, just like the story you, you referenced, and the parent said basically the same thing. My kid made A's and B's the entire school year, even in reading, language arts, and did not get proficient on that test for one day. The extra stress of having to go through retesting and summer school and all of the appeals process is so much to put on a third grade child because it's not the parent that has to do it, it's the child. And it's been put on them by some legislators who've never had a child in public school, who've never had a child in any school, and yet they made a decision that's affecting your children. That's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Dodd?
On the flip side of that, we have had several legislators who have fought against this particular law.
Yes.
There's already four amendments on the table that will be implemented next year that will ease the, the load of this particular law.
Is, is this a partisan law?
No.
Is it a partisan law?
Not in the legislature particularly, not necessarily party-wise?
I don't think so.
Uh, well, all of our laws are partisan because we have a super majority.
Okay, thank you. Answered my question. All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, Dr. George, appreciate that report. Anything yet?
You didn't have to run so fast away from that podium, we weren't going to ask you anything else.
Just, just wanted to make.
It's been a very, very productive meeting. We had some wonderful accolades of young people and teachers and staff. We had some wonderful accolades of young people and teachers and staff. Anything else that needs to come before this board tonight? If not, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Good night.